Welcome to the October 20th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute tonight, I will lead the flag salute and the invocation by City Clerk, Ardashes Kasaki. Join me in the pride of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. The Glendale Character and Ethics Project Word of the Month is Cooperation and is the inspiration for this evening's invocation. Renowned scientist Albert Einstein once reflected that, quote, "A hundred times every day I remind myself that my inner and outer life depend on the labors of other men, living and dead, and that I must exert myself in order to give in the same measure as I have received and am still receiving," end quote. Let us pray tonight that we are always reminded of this truth. Their labors and our successes are born out of the hard work of our predecessors and we owe it to the next generation of Glendale Glendaleans to do the same for them. We pray that the spirit of cooperation always flourishes in Glendale as it did recently during the fires in the hills and subsequent rains. Let us never forget the powers of our collaborative and coordinated efforts and what they can do for our city. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the October 20th, 2009 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 15th, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
Three is presentation and appointments. At 3:00 A is the agenda preview for the meetings of October 27th, 2009.
Mr. Starbert.
Yes, let me turn to Yasmin Beers for the report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the October 27th, 2009, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have one business agenda item, Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Services, and Acting Director of Community Development and Housing regarding current status of Glendale's homeless continuum of care and recommendation to approve the 2009 Homeless Continuum of Care NOFA application to HUD. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we have two business agenda items. One is the Director of Development Services Consulting Services for Formation of Downtown Glendale Business Improvement District and Director of Development Services Citywide Branding and Marketing Campaign. We do have a joint public meeting of the City Council and the Redevelopment Agency, and you have three agenda items for that afternoon at 2:30. Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Services and Development Services regarding the construction progress of the Glendale Adult Recreation Center. Director of Public Works and Development Services Regarding Award of Professional Services Agreement for the Downtown Environmental Graphics and Glen-- Director of Administrative Services, excuse me, Professional Services Agreements with HDL for Property Tax Information Consultation and Revenue Recovery with Hinderleider, Dalmas and Associates for Sales Tax Information. For the 6 o'clock council meeting on October 27th, we have a number of presentations and appointments. Under consent items, Acting Chief of Police Regarding the Creation of a Regional Fugitive Task Force Comprised of the United States Marshal Service, the Passing of Police Department, and the Burbank Police Department, and the Glendale Police Department. There'll be a resolution of appropriation. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, bids received for the inspection, testing and overhaul of boiler safety valves at the Grayson Power Plant. Director of Public Works, Next Bus Real-Time Transit Information System for the Glendale Beeline. You have a number of ordinances for adoption. Ordinance amending the water conservation ordinance, which you will hear about this evening, the interim urgency ordinance extending the moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries for a period of 10 months and 15 days. And lastly, ordinance amending landscape plans when revisions are consistent with California-friendly plantings. Under action items, you have two items. Director of Administrative Services, renewal of contract for actuarial services with Bartell and Associates. And lastly, Director of Public Works, appeal to the City Council Regarding Denial of Owner's Permit to Operate Taxi Cap Service in the City of Glendale by United Taxi of the Southwest DBA United Tax of Glendale. And that completes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
At 3B is proclamation designating October 2009 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November 2009 as End Domestic Violence Month, excepted, the groups accepting may come forward.
Okay, I have two proclamations, in effect, a joint proclamation, and they read as follows. Whereas October and November are National Breast Cancer Awareness and End Domestic Violence Month, and whereas domestic violence is a serious and violent social problem that exists in all economic segments of society, in all cultures, in all countries of the world, and that a growing number of new breast cancer cases are diagnosed annually, SerOptimists are in a position worldwide to educate everyone, especially women, that they have the right to feel safe and to live free from violence, and that they have access to breast cancer prevention information and services. The SerOptimists Workplace Campaign to End Domestic Violence and Breast Cancer Awareness are ongoing SerOptimists' efforts to promote awareness, advocacy, and action. SerOptimists is an international volunteer organization for business and professional women who work to improve the lives of women and girls in local communities and throughout the world. It's launched a region-wide campaign called Color Me Pink, which is for breast cancer, and Purple for domestic violence. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the months of October as Breast Cancer Awareness and the month of November as End Domestic Violence, and with special recognition to two SerOptimists International Groups, SerOptimists International of Glendale, which is the Camino Real Region, and also SerOptimists International of the Verdugos, which is also part of the Camino Real Region. And both groups for their various contributions to the many communities for advocacy, action, and awareness. Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of the SerOptimists members here in Glendale and throughout the region. I know you all do a wonderful job. I've been to so many of your events throughout the years, and I know you're very hardworking members. Thank you for everything.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, good evening. My name is Edith Fuentes, President of SerOptimists International of the Verdugos. This is Sandy Dory, President of SerOptimists International of Glendale. Also with us are members of both SerOptimists Clubs and case managers from Glendale YWCA. We are honored to be here and thankful to receive this joint proclamation on behalf of our region governor, region board, and SerOptimists all over the world. Tonight, the city of Glendale becomes a part of history by joining other cities within the state of California on this region-wide Color Me Pink and Purple project. As you know, pink is associated with breast cancer awareness and purple with domestic violence. Breast cancer is a form of cancer that attacks all economic segments of society, in all cultures, in all countries of the world. Domestic violence is a serious and violent social problem that exists at the workplace and at home. SerOptimists are actively pursuing and bringing about awareness of these two serious issues as to many communities, and we can hope to continue doing this for many years. And Sandy is gonna touch a little bit about breast cancer and domestic violence. Go ahead.
Thank you. You are once again part of this historical event. Pink, as you know, there are many excellent organizations that deal with breast cancer, from research to care to support. We would like to give you some commemorative breast cancer fundraising T-shirts, an invite for an upcoming breast cancer event, pink and brown wristbands, and our famous bras for a cause pins. Purple, we also brought some safe cards, and these purple cards are meant to be placed in the workplace, at schools, doctors' offices, et cetera. They have the national and local contact phone numbers for victims of domestic violence. SerOptimists International of the Verdugos and Glendale will be distributing these cards during the month of November. We hope that the city could again help us by making some copies of these cards for distribution. In closing, thank you for declaring the months of October Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November as End Domestic Violence Month. We hope the city will continue to be a part of this project, not just during the months of October and November, but throughout the whole year and for many, many more years to come. Thank you.
I am so happy to be giving you this proclamation. I am responsible for the breast cancer portion of the proclamation awarding tonight. And what all of you know, but people at home may not know, is when I was diagnosed in 2006 with breast cancer, the SerOptimists was there for me and came to my aid, and it was such a wonderful, loving experience, and they made me feel so proud and so supported. So, on a personal note, I want to thank you all once again, and this is really such a pleasure for me to be presenting you tonight.
Thank you.
And I have the honor of presenting the other half of the mayor's proclamation, which I'd like to do at this time, and congratulate you on your receipt of the proclamation, and also thank you for the work you do. Some of you know, but I guess many of you don't know, that my mother is a breast cancer survivor, was diagnosed with breast cancer at the age of 45, when I was four months old. And in those days, there were no support groups, there was no public outreach. You pretty much found the best surgeon you could find and then hoped for the best. So I know that when my mother walked out the door that day to go off to have her surgery, she was very unclear that she would come home and see a newborn that she had just brought into this world. Fortunately, my mother lived to reach the grand old age of 96, so I celebrated every year of my birth with my mother as sort of a celebration of her successive years of being a cure. So, I thank you greatly for what you do. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, if we can also show on the screen again the hotline for National Domestic Violence, sponsored by the SerOptimists. Thank you.
Okay, next?
Mr. Mayor and council, next, at 3C we have a number, actually, 3C through J, we have a number of nominations for appointment. I can read these in series in accordance to whoever the nominator is, if you so desire. First one, at 3C is an appointment of Ms. Arlene Vador to the Historic Preservation Commission. Nominator, Councilmember Friedman.
Motion? Oh, yeah. I'd like to move the appointment.
Second.
Okay, are there any comments?
Well, nor.
Roll call.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
3D is appointment of Mr. Stephen Lee to the Arts and Culture Commission, nominated by Councilmember Weaver. 3E is appointment of Mr. Eric Kishin to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals, also nominated by Councilmember Weaver. 3F is appointment of Mr. Hu Si Yao to the Glendale Water and Power Commission, also nominated by Councilmember Weaver. And 3G is appointment of Ms. Desiree Shire to the Historic Preservation Commission, also nominated by Councilmember Weaver.
I'd like to move those nominations.
Second.
Mayor, there's only one I want to speak to, because she is new, not a reappointment. Desiree Shire has lived in Glendale 20 years, a member of the Glendale Historical Society, member of the International Interior Design Association, member of the U.S. Green Building Council. She's a certified interior designer, leadership and environmental and energy design accredited professional, LEED program, 20-year professional in the architecture, interiors, real estate industry, historic, and she's restored two homes in Glendale, and one of them will be coming to the council very shortly as a historical designation. So, I think she's got a great background, so I just want the public to know about her. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
At 3H is appointment of Mr. John Sad Jr. to the CDBG Advisory Committee. Nominator was Councilmember Draymond. At 3I is appointment of Ms. Joyleen Wagner to the Arts and Culture Commission. Nominator was Councilmember Draymond. And at 3J is appointment of Minister John D. Miller to the Glendale Water and Power Commission. Nominator was Councilmember Draymond.
Nominate.
Well, yes, I nominate those individuals.
I'll second it now.
All right, thank you for the second, Mr. Weaver. I would like to, two of those nominations are, would be reappointments, one would be new, and that is Mr. John Sad, and I'd like to speak about him briefly. Gives me great pleasure to nominate John Sad to the CDBG. Mr. Sad is someone who is versed in extensively in numbers as a certified public accountant and a member of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, a member of the California Society of Certified Public Accountants. He has his degree in Bachelor, Bachelor of Science degree from California State University of Los Angeles. Aside from a successful practice of that professional discipline in this city, he is also extensively involved, and has been for some time, with a variety of nonprofits and charitable organizations in this city, and also is affiliated with the Kiwanis Club of Glendale as a past president, of course, Glendale Police Foundation, the Glendale Educational Foundation as a past president as well, Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, is a former treasurer there, and the Community Police Citizens Advisory Committee. I think most of you who are involved in public work in the city know Mr. Sad. I'm very pleased to present him this evening as a nominee. I think that he will bring an understanding of both the facts and figures behind requests to the CDBG, as well as an understanding of the needs of nonprofit organizations in this city. And that, Mr. Mayor, concludes my few words about Mr. Sad. I am pleased to nominate him and the other two nominees, Joyleen Wagner to Arts and Culture Commission, which would be a reappointment, and John D. Miller to the Glendale Water and Power Commission, also would be a reappointment.
Okay, thank you. We have a, a, roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Friedman.
I would like to place into nomination for the following boards and commissions. For Transportation and Parking, Peter Fuad. For Commission on the Status of Women, Paula Devine. For Planning Commission, Stephanie Langregan. For GWP Commission, Terry Chan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. [inaudible].
And I have one announcement, which is that it was my pleasure on Saturday night to attend the Relay for Life. I spoke at the Luminaria, and it was a very beautiful and moving experience, and it was very well attended. And something that I haven't seen before at the Relay for Life was a very large presence from the Glendale schools. There was a huge contingent, I think from Hoover High. I think that because they were chanting Hoover Hoover all the time, so that was just my best guess. And it was really nice to see so many young people coming out to raise money and to march, and they were very enthusiastic, and they had set up displays about cancer and different warning signs for cancer. They had raised money, they were marching, they were supporting the survivors that were walking, and it was a really, really nice thing to see.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to report back that last week I had the opportunity to attend for the first time one of our own city-sponsored public outreach meetings dealing with the design guidelines, if you will, on the foothills in the Chrysanthemum Valley area through our planning department at the Spar Community Center. I was extremely impressed, as we, well, as you, Mr. Mayor, like to refer to our Director of Planning as our own Dr. Phil, because of his ability and his department's ability to reach out to the public and bring people of sort of disparate views on issues of design and planning issues, development issues together. That magic was in place and in force that night. It was very interesting to see a group of residents in the area, all sort of working together, pulling together, having intelligent and productive conversation. I look forward to the results of these series of meetings, but I have to tell you how impressed I was. It was terrific to see our staff working so closely with stakeholders in the region. I know that will continue on in other geographic areas of the city as well. This is just where the project is starting, but I thought that we hadn't had a report back from any of our colleagues having attended any of these, so I just barged in and decided to pull up a seat and take a listen, and I was very impressed, and I just wanted to thank them.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm back. We'll be attending all design review meetings of all sorts.
Really?
Anyway, it's good to be back. Okay, next?
Next is, next is consent items, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motions are proposed.
Mr. Draymond.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item, I believe it's 5B1. That's the item related to the Signal Controller Conversion Project. I just have a quick question.
Okay, you're moving the rest?
Well, I'll move the rest remaining of the consent calendar.
All right, and in terms of minutes, I'll be...
A through A through J.
I'll be staying on the minutes. Okay, Mr. Kasaki.
We need a second for the consent calendar. Thank you. Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Thank you. At 5B is Director of Public Works Regarding South Glendale Type 2070 Traffic Signal Controller Conversion and North Glendale Type 2070 Traffic Signal Controller Conversion Projects. At B1 is a motion awarding a contract to Republic ITS Inc. for the South Glendale Type 2070 Traffic Signal Controller Conversion Project, Spec. No. 3374, ESPL 5144049, in the amount of $142,480, and rejecting all of their bids.
Mr. Draymond, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This doesn't have anything to do with the appropriation, actually. It's a question about the work itself, the Traffic Signal Controller Conversion Project, and there's a map, some maps that are included that you have to have either very young eyes or a magnifier of some sort, a telescope, I think, to make out the street names and so on, but particularly on the one that deals with the northern part of the city. In any case, what I'm curious about are areas that, Mr. Zern, could you just fill me in on exactly what, I read the report, but what exactly is a traffic signal controller conversion? What are we converting and what is it controlling in our traffic? And is it something we see, or is it hidden away in a panel box? What I'm ultimately getting at is, in intersections and parts of the city where we have decorative or historic signal arms and things like that, this isn't a retrofit that's going to change the look of them, or, I couldn't find my answer in the report, so...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Draymond, the controller devices that we're looking at are kind of the brain of the signal system. The electronic components, the wiring terminals, these are hidden in a panel, as you alluded to. They are not the actual poles or mast arms. None of those are included in this project as an upgrade. You won't see any decorative poles being replaced. We've got a majority of the signals left that we haven't put on or haven't upgraded. This will also allow us to connect all of our signals into the traffic control center that we have in the MSB, so that we'll have the ability to monitor and also change those signals if need be, depending on traffic, those patterns, accidents, and so forth. So, yeah, this is kind of, as I said, more the backbone of the system, the brains of the system, not the aesthetics or what folks normally see.
And I thank you. That was my question, whether it affects the aesthetics at all. I assumed it probably didn't, but I just wanted to make sure.
Steve, where we have boxes, this all happens in existing boxes, right?
That is correct. So, there may be an existing metal controller box, but it all happens in existing boxes of boxes.
But we won't be enlarging the size of these control boxes?
No, just the internal contents.
A lot of times, quite frankly, we're able to, not necessarily downsize the box, but we, the components are technologically advanced, and we have to, we use less, and it's less...
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have one, Mike Mohill. Is Mr. Mohill in the room?
Thank you. I'd like to say that this afternoon session, Mike Mohill, resident, longtime resident of Glendale, I'd like to talk about these consent items in this package. We're being asked this evening to approve about another million dollars.
That has nothing to do with the item?
Yes, it is.
Leave it up to the city attorney.
5B? It's all sort of...
About all the consent items.
Well, that's right. We're talking about consenting, approving money.
That's not what you put a card in for.
Well, this is one of...
Mayor, it's within your discretion, but the consent items have been voted on, so typically this item would be limited to the item that's before you, which is this one particular item at 5B, not the entire consent calendar.
Well, whatever, it's one of the consent items, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate, appreciate the rudeness, whatever you want to call it, okay? I'm calling this item B and all the other consent items, we're talking about another, about a million dollars in expenses. And that troubles me, because as to where are we going to get the money? Where are we going to get the money? Now, headline news this evening is business in LA Times, wide open spaces, almost $51 million, 50 million square feet of Southland office space is vacant. We also have warehouse vacancies in the state, in the county of Los Angeles. I know I'm repeating myself, gentlemen, but you know what? There's a lot of pain going on in this city. We've got California forecasts that are horrible, we've got pension cuts, and where are we going to get the money to pay for all these expenses? That's my question. Two dies out of business, another little shop in the gallery is out of business. If one by one, businesses are going folding, where are we going to get the money? I would like a report from our city manager as to the health of our city right now, expenses versus revenue. Do we have the money coming in? I'm living on Social Security. I'm saying it's time for the people who make the most amount of money to give back. Thank you, and again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion for...
No, not yet.
5B1?
I'll make the motion. Five, second.
Roll call.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, could we go back to council comments that have been at Mr. Draymond's statement? Made me think of something I wanted to ask. That was at Broadway and Brand, the brains of the signals, left turn signal, when I was down there a few days ago, turning from Broadway onto Brand, the left turn signal operated for about two seconds. One car at a time was getting through. So, the brains maybe need a little touch up?
Yes, I never claim that they're perfect, so we'll look at that way. Kind of like my brain, Mr. Weaver.
Right here, too.
Some of them misfires.
And the other one, uh, Stubber, can you tell me what happened, what was going on Sunday down on Brand? Cones were out, police were out?
Oh, Run For, Run For Life event on South Brand.
All I wanted to say is, it's the worst traffic management I've ever seen in this city. I happened to be down on, down below Maple, uh, coming west. I got to Brand, median was blocked, I couldn't go through, so I made a right turn. I had to get clear to Lexington before I could make a left turn. You couldn't get into the Americana, nothing, there was nobody in the lanes at all, and it was, there was traffic blocked up two to three blocks long with people that all wanted to make left turns and they couldn't do it. I had to go up Lexington, over, come down Central, in there, and then I was told it was hurting business, restaurants there, because nobody could get in.
That was, that was the first year of that event, and it'll be evaluated in terms of the, uh, of how well or how poorly it went.
Yeah, I, I, all I would be suggesting is occasionally the police open up when there's no runners or anybody, occasionally let the cars make a left turn.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be asking for a review of that event. Again, it was the first year, and, uh, frankly, I had some concerns about it to begin with, but we'll do a full evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Perhaps tendonopovitis might have let us all down on that.
Oh, hi.
We can be assured Mr. Povolitis didn't let us down. A lot of things might happen, but that will never happen.
He's turning red as I speak. Mr. Drayman. Mr. Drayman.
He's not heading it up, man.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I apologize for, uh, interrupting again. I, uh, I also neglected to ask a question during, uh, council, uh, staff comments. What reminded me was Mr. Zern's, uh, explanation of traffic controller conversion, uh, issue. I just wanted to follow up on the banner pole, utility pole issue in Kenneth Village at, uh, Kenneth Road and Grand View, to find out. We were going to look at that in the process of the completion of the construction in the, uh, the intersection there, and I was wondering, were we able to, uh, find a solution to that idea?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Drayman, uh, what I asked the staff to do was to lay the poles out and see how we could do that best, and then also get some prices on the poles. I was going to put an, an estimated budget together, and then we were going to run it by the, the village, um, merchants, to make sure we had the right concept, uh, that we weren't doing something that was totally, in their minds, not going to work, um, so we're still in the process of...
So, it's in process.
Just, just a reminder, we were going to look to see if GLP had any, uh, spare utility poles that could be used for that purpose.
That was part of the process, yes.
Thank you so much. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No problem, thank you. All right, next?
Next would be Oral Communications.
All right, um, for the announcement portion of Oral Communications, we'll start with, Colin Bogart, Leon Mayer.
Mayor Quintero, council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I'm with the LA County Bicycle Coalition, uh, working here in Glendale on the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan in partnership with the City of Glendale, and, uh, I'm here to invite you and the public to attend, uh, the second of our Safe and Healthy Streets Community Meetings. Uh, it's going to be tomorrow, Wednesday, October 21st, at the Brand Library Recital Hall, uh, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Anyone who lives or works in Glendale is invited to attend, and, um, as I mentioned in my, before my previous meeting, in this case, the community members are the experts. They're the people who are going to tell us what they see on the streets of Glendale and what their experiences are, um, and we're encouraging people who walk and bike often, as well as people who don't, uh, to attend this meeting, and the information gathered from this meeting will help shape the policy recommendations for the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan that we are working on. This particular meeting is going to be focusing on what we're calling Central Glendale, uh, which is a loosely defined as anywhere north of the 134 freeway and roughly south of Spar Heights Oakmont-Monocito Park. Uh, I also want to mention that we intentionally scheduled these meetings to avoid Tuesday nights, so that council and city staff can attend if they would like to, so I really do want to encourage you to consider coming, and, uh, would invite the public, uh, as well. Uh, once again, tomorrow night at the Brand Library Recital Hall at 7:00 PM. Uh, for more information, people can call 818-334-9731, or they can go online to la-bike.org/Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a resident of, along with Mr. Weaver and Mr. Mohill, a resident of Glen Oaks Canyon, Quacky the Duck.
Wait, no, no.
No, Leon Mayer first.
It's funny, Quacky looks remarkably like Leon Mayer.
I see Quacky in the, uh, let's bring Quacky.
I yield to Quacky the Duck, because I was about to say something about the absence of Quacky the Duck. Come right in.
He lives in Glen Oaks Canyon, too?
Yes, he does.
Sounds like God. How did I miss him?
He just came in.
No, he lives in Glen Oaks Canyon, I just wondered. I missed him.
It was like very out.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Rick Middleton, and I'm the chairman of the Kiwanis Duck Race this year, and, um, I brought a friend with me, just to kind of remind everybody that, uh, there was a partnership between the city and the Kiwanis Club of Glendale, and that things are going along swimmingly. We're on schedule to build our lake, uh, this Saturday at Verdugo Park, and we're looking forward to having all the residents and their children out to enjoy it. There's lots and lots of fun and games to, to be had. We've got a climbing wall and all kinds of other things that were going on. Um, if you're interested in adopting a duck, there's still plenty for adoption, racing quality, of course, and that would be at www.ducksra, or duckrace.com/Glendale.
Or Ducks For Kids.
Or ducksforkids.com. Either one will get you there, and you just click on Adopt a Duck, and, uh, it, all the money goes back to this community. Uh, it goes in the form of the, uh, chair, uh, the, um, scholarships, uh, the, uh, car seat safety inspections that we do. There's lots of different, uh, organizations that benefit from this directly, so please, you know, go out, have a great day on Saturday from 10 till 2 o'clock. We'll be racing ducks. Adoption's cut off at, uh, 12 o'clock noon on Saturday, so even if you just want to show up there and look over the stock and pick your winning duck, please feel free to come on out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Quack.
See you in the canyon.
Thank you, Leon.
All right, Leon Mayer.
Mr. Middleton forgot to tell you that it's going to be a giant duck there at Verdugo Park, and if your kids haven't seen the giant duck before, you gotta take them out to see them. It's just a, a, it's a ball to see that. In any event, tomorrow night, I'm here from the library, as usual, and tomorrow night we're having a, uh, popular talk show host, Stepan Partamian, who's written the book, Yes, We Have, and this is a book which, uh, talks about the achievements of Armenian-Americans who have been here since Jamestown, since, and since 1800 to the present. He, uh, talks about and has a book about, I would say, 40, 50 famous Armenians, whether they were scientists, entertainers, authors, politicians, they're all featured in the book, and he will, uh, discuss them, uh, inventors. They will be, uh, featured tomorrow night, 7 o'clock at the library, so don't forget to come tomorrow night if you can possibly make it, it's free, parking is validated, 7 o'clock, Central Library Auditorium. Now, tonight, as I already told you, Jenny Cho's going to be there to talk about Chinatown in Los Angeles, and, uh, Jenny Cho, uh, has a, uh, a book about, uh, photographs, which features 150 years of Chinatown and the Chinese history in this area. More important for now, on the 28th, that's a week from tomorrow, we have the premier event of One Book One Glendale, and that is the event featuring Lisa C., famous Chinese-American author. Her book is Shanghai Girls. She is the daughter of Carolyn C., who's a famous author, and the C. family came here about 150 years ago. Uh, the great-grandmother, great-grandfather of Lisa C. came here to California about 150 years ago, and that's a, be a, a great event, and those who have not, uh, got involved with it yet, you can go to the library, check out the book, Shanghai Girls, and on the evening of the event, you can come there. The library will close at 6, but it'll be open the rest of the night for Shanghai Girls and Lisa Lee. She will sell her book and autograph it, and she will talk about Shanghai Girls and other things related to the One Book One Glendale event, so, thank you for your attention. Hope to see you then. Also like to see you Saturday at the Duck Race. Anyway, thanks again.
Thank you. Ron Farina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, uh, city staff. Uh, I was here last week, and I promised that I would try to bring with me today and this evening Fritz Coleman, our favorite weatherman, and, uh, he has a special message of invitation to our annual, uh, comedy night. Uh, this is our 18th annual event. It's going to be November the 1st, that's a Sunday evening. There's going to be two shows, one at 6:15 and one at 8:15. This is a, um, our major fundraiser for the year, and it's also the, I think, one of the best events that we've got going. The Glendale Center Theater offers us, uh, the, their facility for free. Um, it's convenient, there's always ample parking in the surrounding businesses, so that's great. Uh, the tickets are only $25. Fritz does a wonderful job for us. He recruits, uh, four to five top, uh, stand-up comics. Each of them performs for about 15 to 20 minutes. It's a regular set that you would go to at a comedy show. Uh, we're also providing this year a VIP reception at the Phoenicia that starts at 6:00 PM, and that's for the second show, so you'd go to the Phoenicia from 6 to 8, um, enjoy some fine wine and some, uh, Middle Eastern hors d'oeuvres, and then at that time you'd be able to, then go to the second show at 8:15. Ready?
Hello, I'm Fritz Coleman. I'm inviting you to my 18th annual comedy night to benefit the Glendale-Chrysena Valley chapter of the American Red Cross. 18 years in one location. Most banks can't say that. This year was Sunday, November 1st, two shows, 6:15 and 8:15. Tickets are only $25. It's at the beautiful Glendale Center Theater again. You can't beat it. Go to arcglendale.org for tickets and further information. Hope to see you there, November 1st. Thanks.
He does a much better job than I do, but he is, uh, he's a stand-up comic in his own right, but he also does the introductions of these individuals and takes care of all of their, uh, expenses for us, so we're very privileged to have him. This started, uh, around 1990 after the College Hills fires as a fundraiser for the American Red Cross, and has evolved since then, so we're happy to present it to the community. We invite everybody to come out, uh, you know, you have a good time. Uh, Fritz does a wonderful job, and these comics are, are very good, and they're, uh, family-oriented, so you can bring, uh, at least the teenagers, they might enjoy the show as well. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Farina. Okay, next, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Mayor and Council, at 7:00, under Adoption of Ordinances, 7A ordinance amending and adding certain provisions to the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to city officers establishing the community planning department and officers establishing the community planning department and conforming to the titles, conforming the titles of certain positions to the charter and actual functions. This was offered on October 13, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor, move 7A.
Uh, Mr. Starbird, you want, has somebody been introduced and discussed?
Yes, was introduced at your last meeting.
I have one speaker, Mike Mohill.
I guess.
Got a second?
Evening, Mike Mohill, long-term resident. I have a couple of questions on this item. First one is, if, is there going to be any savings from this reorganization? If so, how much? Or is management just trying to subvert, subvert issues that they want to hide? Why do we need to do this? Are we hiding things? The other question is, office holders, do they have to live in the City of Glendale? And why not? I think if more of the office holders of the city, the managers of the city, lived in the City of Glendale, they would think twice before they spend our money. Somebody who lives in Fallbrook, Tahanga, Sunland, Burbank, this is just a paycheck this city. But I know our acting, uh, uh, police chief, Mr. Ron DePalma, told me he lived in Glendale. I thought that was wonderful. How many other senior management live in the City of Glendale? He sees the same potholes that I do every day when I ride down Central Avenue or Broadway or Wilson, or on Glen Oaks, East Glen Oaks Boulevard, because he lives in the city, and he's a stakeholder. He's not a stakeholder in, in Burbank or Los Angeles. Why can't we have all our, all our middle and upper managers live in the City of Glendale? If we're going to be doing reorganizing, let's reorganize and have these people become stakeholders in the City of Glendale. Am I asking too much? Is the public asking too much? Do I need people who, who consider this just a paycheck? When they get a pay raise, these employees? That's wonderful, but it comes out of my wallet, and again, I'm living on social security, and these people are living on big fat pensions when they retire. Speaking about pensions, how much are they giving?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Starbird, you don't have to answer those questions.
Oh, darn.
Um, let me, uh, let me check with our city attorney. I believe you cannot require, uh, employees to live in the, uh, city, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, generally, that's, that's correct. There are constitutional limitations with requiring employees to live in certain jurisdictions due to constitutional...
Mr. Mayor, can I make just one point, however? The recent fires and the recent floods are a very good example. Uh, Mr. Zern and I were out until 1 and 2 o'clock in the morning. I know Mr. Zern, uh, probably had all three hours sleep one evening. Mr. Zern doesn't live in the city, but I'll tell you, there was no more greater dedication we saw during the recent preparation for the rains, in his commitment and his time and his energies, and I'll say the same thing about Chief Scoggins during fires. Uh, so the comments, although I think, uh, maybe some public perception, frankly, are rather offensive to people who dedicate so much time and energy to the city regardless of where they live.
Mr. Mayor, what that is, it's called professionalism.
Mr. Zern has a short commute to Beverly Hills, is that correct?
Actually, it's why Mr. Zern has a Suburban, he sleeps in the back in the parking garage most nights.
All right. Okay, did I have a motion for that?
Yes, there was.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian? Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next, under Action Items, is General Manager at 8A of Glendale Water and Power regarding proposed amendments to the city's water conservation ordinance, Chapter 13.36 of the Glendale Municipal Code. At 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Okay, Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Peter Cavounis, Administrator of our Water Section. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we are, uh, here today to present to you some amendments to the city's water conservation ordinance. Uh, this ordinance, as you recall, was adopted by you, uh, during the summer with the direction of the staff to come back with necessary amendments after living with it for a few months, to try to figure out, uh, what, if any, were sticking points, as well as with a few items that we were directly, explicitly asked to, to, uh, improve on. Uh, so the report covers, uh, covers those items, uh, the, the summary section goes through those. Uh, we've addressed the issues, uh, specifically on, uh, vegetation intended for consumption, um, as well as issues with fountains, um, and so on. Uh, at, at this time, if it pleases the council, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, quick comment. Uh, Peter, I hope you can recall, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but the, we, you, city council, can be very proud of this community's performance since we started our active water conservation program, because our residents have responded tremendously to the call to conserve, uh, regardless of the requirements of the ordinance, they have gone way beyond the goal. Peter, do you recall the numbers?
Uh, it's been consistently over 15% each month for the last four months. Uh, month of September was 18% conservation.
Yeah, I think, I think we've approached 20% reduction in our water usage in the community.
Doesn't mean we can slack off.
No, I wasn't suggesting that, I'm just saying that this community has done very well.
Okay, I have a question, um, on the summary, number four, exemptions for landscape irrigation with handheld buckets or handheld hoses. What kind of exemption are you considering there? What kind of exemption are you considering there?
The exemption is, is listed in, in a little more detail. It changes on a phase-by-phase basis. The second phase that we're in now is we're allowing irrigation with handheld bucket or handheld hose equipped with automatic shut-off device, so people can water with that any day of the week. They still need to abide by the 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM requirement, but they can actually irrigate longer than that. In later phases, people are restricted to the days of the week as well as the hours of the day, along with the turf irrigation.
Okay, so currently you can water your plants?
Yes. And that's viewed as, that's viewed as giving flexibility to where if your lawn's doing well except one little spot, people can go and touch up that spot. And that's making us a little more consistent with neighboring cities of Burbank and Pasadena. And we don't, frankly, don't believe that we'll have residents standing out there for hours to irrigate by hand just because they can. We see, we think they will see this as, as a convenience and a way to address specific issues on a, on a property.
Okay, and then later, water conservation, Phase 2, Section I, the Director of Parks Recreation Community Services can establish different irrigation days other than the standard Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, provided they maintain. What concerns me there is that if the public sees that the city is irrigating and watering on other days, and maybe they may be confused or somehow forget that it's Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays that the, that the sprinklers should be used. So what are we thinking there? Why?
Mr. Mayor, the thought is that, you know, it would be our, it would be our effort to educate the residents on what is the appropriate irrigation, days of the week and, and times of day and so on. As far as parks is concerned, the view was that we need to provide, especially as drought situation gets worse, we need to provide a place in the city where, where residents can recreate and children have a place to play, and people can come together in those common places. It seems a more effective way to provide green space in the city. So the thought was to reduce by, by pulling it back to three days a week, but keeping it a three days a week throughout the various phases of conservation so that we can have those common green spaces in the city.
Let me, let me add that a Saturday watering for parks may not be the best time either. So that you water the morning or the evening before the most active time you have in the parks that was raised. So the feeling was, in addition to what Peter mentioned, that in some parks actively used, the Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday doesn't necessarily fit the usage of the park as best.
And this specifically parks rather than parkways, right? It's not Glen Oaks or other public, but the parks themselves?
The parks themselves.
Soccer fields, baseball fields. Ms. Friedman?
I wasn't going to, to mention this because it's such a small kind of nifty thing, but since some of these changes are small changes, I will throw it out there, which is, I've had a few people email me, and I, I sent you one of the emails, but I've had a few of these people asking if we can make, now that it's daylight savings time, the watering a little bit earlier for people who do water by hand so that they don't have to go in the dark. So I'm wondering if we can maybe just throw a line in that says something about 20 minutes before nightfall on those days.
I already raised that one. Didn't get any response.
Councilmember Friedman, you know, we, we did think about that, and Councilman Weaver is correct. He did raise that earlier, and our perspective was, you know, there's two good reasons not to do that. Of course, it's your discretion, your prerogative to do that if you'd like. One, from an educational point of view, it's difficult to, to be changing halfway through the year. It's the same reason we didn't go to one day a week during the winter as other cities have gone to, from three days in the summer to one day. It's difficult to keep people consistently educated as to what's appropriate, what's allowed, and what isn't allowed. And so we felt the same way about the hours of the day would be confusing, to say it's 9:00 to 6:00 unless it's, you know, daylight savings ends, you know. So that was one reason. The second reason is that daylight savings time ends in the wintertime when watering requirements are cut back anyway. So we felt that the, the watering needs would be less in the winter, and we would hope that people would understand and hopefully could accommodate the 9:00 to 6:00. Again, it's the council's prerogative, so if you'd like that kind of change, we'll, we'll work it in the language.
No, that makes sense to me, and I'm glad that you're able to state this for members of the public who are watching, because it's, it is definitely good to reinforce that we don't need to be watering maybe three days a week in the winter.
Thank you.
Just, just get your flashlight batteries and get out there. Mr. Draymond.
Okay, Mr. Cavounas, I'm going to raise an issue. Since we're talking about, what was the word, tweaking the system, so to speak, or tweaking the directives, I have received a number of emails and personal contacts since our program was first discussed and then implemented. Have to do with our friends that live in the annex who receive their water from the Crescent Valley Water District, who even though they are Glendale residents, are a part of a different watering cycle, and who are having a, an even more difficult time keeping plants alive when they're down to, I believe, two days a week.
Correct.
And they want to know as red-blooded Americans who are Glend, are fellow Glendaleans, why they are not entitled to that extra day, entitled to plants that are alive, along with the rest of Glendale residents, as opposed to their neighboring relatives who are in the county portion. And, and since we know who they are, why are we not extending that to, since we are making these adjustments now, why are we not adjusting with that in mind as well?
A very legitimate question. There's institutional reasons, and then there's practical reasons.
I feel a big but coming up.
There's a big but. The real practical reason is that they're being served by Crescent Valley Water District that has some local resources, some, some groundwater wells, and then they get wholesale supply from Metropolitan Water District through the Foothill Municipal Water District. That water is very expensive. We pay for Metropolitan Water District about $700 per acre foot. They pay over $1,000 per acre foot for their supplemental supplies. In addition, their wells are old, and while they're well-maintained and producing as much as they can, they find themselves with a shortage, a true shortage of supply, or the, the alternative is to pay very heavy penalties. So for, for customers in Crescent Valley Water District service area, they've had to cut back to more significant level of conservation, as you stated, two days per week. From an institutional point of view, I, you know, it's a, it's a gray area. It's, it's the city's, it's the city's territory, and so our ordinances apply there. But at the same time, from a water supply point of view, they can't have the benefits that we do. We have talked to Crescent Valley Water District about transferring those residents over, the city of Glendale residents over to Glendale Water and Power for water service. They are already receiving electric service, just to make things a little more complicated.
You couldn't possibly.
Wait till you find out how the billing is done. And there is some acceptance of that. We actually had a LAFCO hearing, and LAFCO suggested that it would be more appropriate for GWP to serve water to that area. But that is an extensive process. It would take a very large investment by us. It's something that we would plan to bring to you for consideration in the future, but we need a lot more study before we can bring that forward. So in the meantime, we have aberrations such as the water conservation disparity.
Mr. Starburg.
Well, in as much, in as much as CV is the provider of the water, do we have the ability to change that, that policy?
The restriction? I don't know, and Peter probably knows that as well. How do they impose their restriction?
I would think we could be more restrictive, but I'm not sure we could be less restrictive.
And that's, that's what I think is why, and I'm not sure how, what mechanism they use to impose the restriction, but I'm sure that the customers have to comply with it regardless of what, even if our ordinance is more, more lenient.
Now, if they were less restrictive, we could possibly be more restrictive, but I doubt that we could do the, the opposite.
Well, I can tell you, their water rates for now are considerably higher than what GWP's are. So there is a sentiment there that that's a natural curb for, for water use, but not enough.
Consider it a, a complaint to the landlord from the north part of the city.
Noted.
Okay, I have two speaker cards. Mike Mohill, followed by Larry Barnes.
Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. We're having a very lovely, light lovely, lively discussion on water this evening. I'd like to thank very much Mr. Peter from the, Peter from the GWP on his comments. I have a couple of questions. Since the city is saving 15% water, will our rate, water rates go up 15% to make up the difference? Number two. For myself, where my water heater is and where my bathrooms are, it's a long run. And therefore, when I turn the hot water on, I use a lot of water, you know, cold water becomes hot, 15 gallons later, it's down the toilet and on down the drain. Now, I'm told from my plumber, there is a piece of equipment, costs a couple hundred bucks, that will keep your hot water warm. Okay? Sounds a good idea to me. Now, if the city was willing to give the people in the Pellicani Estates $130 for their air conditioning, put in an air conditioning unit to make them all happy, well, why don't you make someone like myself, who'd like to put out, put in that piece of equipment, that might cost me a couple hundred dollars, give me a tax credit? Why not, Mr. Draymond? You gave them a tax credit. Okay? That's one. Number two, will the people in the north area who have large grasses, especially along of Mountain Avenue, Kenneth Road, some of those homeowners are pretty big setback homes? I don't think those residents really want to see their grass go brown, especially if they have a cool season lawn. My question is, I would think those residents would rather pay a penalty than have their grass go brown. Is there any provision for that? Because there are people who say, listen, I, I was at a, I was at a party recently, and the guy said, hey, you know what? I have a swim party. I want my house, place to be green, green, green. And he watered all the time. This is on North Ridge. Glendale isn't going to be any different. Some people are willing to pay the extra. Is it fair? Hey, life is not fair, but those wealthy people are willing to pay more money for water. And why don't we let them have that opportunity? City can always use more money. Think about it. Thank you.
Mr. Draymond.
Yes, Mr. Mohill, the problem with what you're saying is that we didn't give air conditioning units to anybody in the city, in Pellicani Estates or near the flyway. $430 or any other amount, it was, I believe, a credit on, on their electrical bill.
Okay, Larry Barnes.
Hi, I'm Larry Barnes, President of the Chevy Chase States Association, and really didn't come down here to talk about, I, of 8A, rather, I was going to talk about the Design Review Board, but since I'm here, I want to congratulate the Department of Water and Power for recognizing the needs of homeowners. Because in the tweaks that were put forward by Mr. Cavounas is, I think, really user-friendly to the homeowners of Glendale. I, for one, do have three brown spots in my lawn, and would appreciate the ability to, on particularly if we have three hot days in a row, to go out there with my hose and, and water those. I can do it, I assure everybody, in less than 10 minutes. Also, there are spot plants that have died in my lawn, just because of the inability to take care of them during, during off days. So from a homeowner's perspective, for decorative fountains and maintaining vegetation for consumption, tomato plants and citrus plants and so forth, I do appreciate the tweaks to the ordinance. And talking for other homeowners, certainly in Chevy Chase, we appreciate that and would endorse this adoption.
Thank you. Friedman?
Just to respond a little further to something that Mr. Mohill said. The device you're talking about for your bathroom is a flash water heater, and I believe that our city does give some, does give rebates for a lot of these types of, of energy-saving devices. I don't know if a flash water heater particularly, if there's any rebates. Maybe our GWP representative can tell us, but there are for a lot of these types of things.
A couple of thoughts on the product that Mr. Mohill mentioned. I, I thought he was talking about a hot water recirculator as opposed to a flash water heater. I, I don't believe we have rebates for those products, although I would personally endorse them. I have one in my home, and it has made a big difference. I would ask Mr. Ned Bassin if I'm correct about my understanding on rebates. We do not offer rebates. We do not offer rebates on those. There is some debate as to their overall environmental footprint benefit, because they do save on water, but they do add to the electric consumption. I'm a water guy, so I have one. A couple of other items I'd like to add. One, Mr. Mohill mentioned the financial impact, and I would like to, to address that with City Council, is we have seen reduced revenue as a result of conservation. Not quite as, as much as the conservation itself, because some of our expenses are variable expenses that have been reduced. For example, purchased water from Metropolitan Water District expense has been significantly reduced. And we do have reserves that we are using to meet the reduction in revenue. We are carefully looking at the impact to revenue, and if we believe there's a need to protect the financial integrity of your utility, we will make the recommendation. We don't expect that to come to you, at least for another three to six months, because we're entering the low demand time of the year. So we believe we're okay for now. The other item, there was a concern about big users being able to buy their way out of conservation. Our conservation ordinance does not allow that. Every user has to have three days a week, and all the other restrictions, just the same. So it's a very fair and equitable approach citywide. Last, I'd like to add one more item. We had talked about having retrofit on resale, retrofit of a property upon its resale, and, and we backed away from that as a city. We work with the local Realtors Board and decided to instead support legislation which has now passed and been signed by the governor, SB 407, which mandates residential retrofit of all residential properties statewide by the year 2017 with low-flow devices, and all commercial and multifamily units by 2019. We believe that's a very good piece of legislation. It certainly meets our needs to conserve not just as Glendale, Southern California, the state as a whole, but it also has met the Realtors' need, and that's why, probably why it was approved as much as, with as much support as it was.
What were those dates again? 2017?
2017. For residential, and 2019 for commercial and multifamily.
2019. Yeah, right around the corner. We're at 2009. We ought to be really parched by the time that swings into... Okay, any other comments? Mr. Weaver?
The device that Peter's talking about, I put one in my house in 1979 for an outdoor shower. I have a switch. I turn it on, it starts it. So by the time I turn the water on, it is hot. Turn it off, so the power usage is very minimal. Doing it, and there was no rebate when I put it in, 1979.
And we do have rebates for solar.
Yes.
You put the solar on, then generate the electricity for your flash water heater. There you go.
But?
But?
Believe the solar uses water.
Uh-huh. My, my solar panels do, but it's a recirculation of water in the swimming pool. Uh-huh.
Will drain the pool.
When there's a fire, the firemen know where to find the water.
Okay, any other comments? I need a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce the ordinance at 8A1.
Maybe ordinance has been introduced.
Thank you so much.
Next, please.
At 8B is Director of Public Works Regarding Station Fire Recovery Efforts. Funding Necessary to Continue to Address Post-Fire Issues. At B1 is a resolution appropriating $555,000.
Mr. Starburg.
Yes, let me go to Steve Zern for the staff report on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and what is indicative of the, the team effort that we have put into both the post-fire preparation and the storm preparation, I'm going to go to Mr. Dave Ahern of the Parks Recreation Community Services Department, Mr. Michael Whittaker of the Public Works Department to tag-team this particular presentation. And then, upon that completion, I also think we have somebody from Los Angeles County Public Works here as well. Mr. Chapchan and I are available as well to answer any questions.
And we have a very brief presentation, if you would allow us to make it.
A brief one?
Sure. Very brief. The Parks and Public Works Departments were designated as the lead agencies in the post-fire recovery. We already know that the station fire was the largest in LA County history. In the city of Glendale, the fire fortunately was only within the park, yet it was pretty devastating to the park. Only the improved portions of the park were spared by the backfires that were set. that were set to protect the community, and this before-and-after shot is just the most dramatic and telling of the impacts. The, the risk assessment was novel in the sense that you don't always have a fire this big in any of our lifetimes, and so we've looked outside the, the city to the organizations listed in the right-hand column, both national and here in the county, for assistance. The second step was community outreach, which will continue, there's a third community meeting that's tentatively scheduled for Monday, November the 2nd. Door-to-door flyers have been provided, we've been coordinating rain preparations and other efforts with other outside agencies. The first, and is with LA County Flood Control, and we do have a representative, Ms. Pat Wood. This is the Dunsmere Basin before cleaning and during cleaning, it holds 103 cubic yards, and it's being restored to full capacity.
Hundred and three cubic yards?
Hundred and 3,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recovery logistics, we closed the park for safety, both from an ash perspective and as you disturb the soil, it impacts the ability of the natural recovery of the plant vegetation there. We began stockpiling very proactively, just as Parks proactively scheduled that first community meeting, Public Works made the first K-Rail purchase in advance of other organizations. So, we began to stockpile supplies, and the bottom-left picture is just the classic example of the tremendous sense of community in North Glendale, and the responsiveness of those individuals. We thought it would take them half a day, and they filled the bags in literally a couple hours. Debris barrier placement was our next stage, 3,000 linear feet has been installed throughout Glendale. Sandbags, we estimate 134 tons, it's right on the money, that 13,800 bags have been deployed throughout the city. We already had rain, the County Flood Control District told us October 15th, and boy, were they right, Ahern had told me it wouldn't rain before November 15th, and I've stopped listening to him. This is a full organizational response, as you can imagine. And while we dodged a bullet this time, this is simply the slide to try to indicate that this is not a temporary winter time, potential event only. As we looked at the historic records, it, I was shocked to see that there were some May and August events that were of sufficient size to actually trigger the kind of debris flows that we're hoping to avoid. And finally, our last slide is simply that the, the park is such a wonderful resource, and the recovery process has already begun in it. And with that, we're open to any questions you may have of us.
Mr. Drayman?
I see you're still using that stuffed deer in those...
[laughing]
Is that the same one? We didn't appropriate new funds?
It is, we...
Buy a new deer?
Well, I, well, actually, I removed that from Mr. Ahern's front lawn and, and put it there. I would like to introduce, if I could...
That's Daryl the deer.
Very briefly, Pat Wood from the LA County Flood Control, simply because the coordination and the service from their organization has been tremendous in the Glendale community.
Pat?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Patricia Wood with Los Angeles County Flood Control District. I just want to give you a brief update on the county's efforts in the area. We have, we have all of, we have about, oh, let's say about half a dozen or so debris retaining inlets, debris basins in the Glendale area, in the fire area there, and they're all, they've all been made ready for storm season. We're going to continue monitoring these debris retaining inlets and debris basins throughout the storm season and clean them out as necessary. So, one thing that I do want to emphasize is that residents in the neighborhood, in those neighborhoods up there around Dick Mansion Park, Mark Ridge, Dunsmere, and those areas, is that they're, get used to seeing trucks for the next several years, and we know that trucking's a very sensitive issue to, in a lot of residential neighborhoods, including my own, and just hope that people will be patient with us, with the, with the trucks on there, they are there to protect you from something even worse. Another thing that we've also been doing in Glendale is giving advice to individual property owners in the city on how to protect their individual properties from debris flows from the fire area. To date, we have provided advice or notifications and offers of advice to over 45 residences in your city. The goal of the advice that we provide is to deflect the debris around their houses, not to dam them up in, in their backyards, but to deflect them around their houses and to get them out onto the street, where the debris will go anyway, we just want to make sure that doesn't take a house along with it. One of the things we do want to emphasize to these residents is to implement the recommend, you know, implement measures to protect their properties as soon as possible, since we are in storm season on here, and these measures are going to need to be implemented every storm season for the next several years. We roughly estimate it takes about three to five years for the wa, for a burned watershed to significantly recover. If residents are wanting advice on their property, or they want to have us take a look, see on it, we do have a hotline that they can call, it's at 1-800-214-4020. That? Thank you.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Weaver.
Question, offhand, do you happen to know what the design of the debris basins, what flooding event they're designed for?
Yes.
25-year or...
Well, that's a, that's a very good question, Mr. Weaver. Our design debris event is typically a 50-year frequency rainfall that hits on a watershed that had been burned four years previously. Now, that may seem rather odd, but what we did was that we took the mother of all storms of 1938 as our model, which we had a very intense rainfall, in which we based our rainfall mass curve, and we did it on, of, on a watershed, and in 1938, the watershed up in the San Gabriel's had been burned by a fire in 1933. So, we figured that we'd take that event as our, as our basis for our hydrologic standard. And we use that when we do our mudflow phase mapping after fires and for debris potential for our debris basins. And the applicability to a freshly burned watershed is that we, what we found as a rule of thumb over the years, is that on a freshly burned watershed, it doesn't take a 50-year frequency rainfall intensity to be able to trigger a design debris event. It could be something as low as a five-to-10-year frequency rainfall, which is something that can, that has a very good probability of happening within that five-year recovery window that I had just mentioned.
So, for 50-year?
Well, 50-year frequency rainfall, what it is, is that it's a 1/50 chance...
I know, I'm from Army Corps of Engineers, I helped, I did some of the surveying for some of those debris basins back in the 60s, so I, I know what you're talking about. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, I might just chime in here, that one of the aspects of tonight's report to you is a request for funding. As we, as we have been preparing and will continue to prepare and then anticipate, as Ms. Wood said, for the next several years, but anticipating at least through this winter season, both the Parks Department and Public Works have, have made some estimates, and they're just that estimates. We have some past experience, Public Works is looking at protective measures to put in place for private and public property, and also the response that we would need to make in the event of, of a rain incident and debris flow and the cleanup and so forth. Not to speak for the parks, but I think they're looking at long-range plans of rebuilding the park, protecting the park now and rebuilding it for the future. Unfortunately, there are no grants or, or relief agencies that give you money for proactive behavior, as such as what we're doing. They'll, they'll gladly pay you once the damage is done to fix it, but, but to, to take the measures to protect in advance, there isn't a lot of agencies out there willing to, to fund that. So, at this point in time, we are anticipating this will have to come from, from our, our funds, and thus the, the item we've, we've got before you. It is my hope that we won't have to use that money. On the other hand, if we have as severe a winter as some predict, we may be back again to talk to you more about additional resources we may need.
Friedman?
My question has to do with the grant money, and you did answer it, but I'm wondering if any of the, now, was there FEMA money for the fire itself?
My, yes, that, the, the FEMA fire, Mr. Starber, I see is ready, but my, 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 of that from the fire, it's been closed now, we did get a number of items included in that, that were immediate post-fire responses where we had absolutely issues that needed to be addressed immediately. So, we were able to get some of the, the materials and labor in on that.
What about reconstruction?
And of course, the firefighting aspect of it is all taken care of. Once that's closed, then most of the big, heavy lifting that we've done since then, both, both by Parks in the Parks facility and Public Works in the, in the, the right of way, has been within our own funds.
What about park restoration? Is there any grant money for that?
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, we are looking at, Mark Stertavan is looking for potential funding for park restoration, but I have to tell you, we're, at this point, we're not recommending reseeding or anything like that, we're going to have volunteers go in and look at the native vegetation, see if there's a, a way to replant some of that. But most likely, that area's going to recover on its own. Reseeding is really not a good option, it's been proven not to work.
Right. And my other question was about the K-rails, and it's just a small question, but those rails, I'm assuming that that's a large part of where this money is going?
Correct.
Can they be reused after the five years or however long we decide to leave them up?
Absolutely.
So, we'll have those and we'll be able to keep them into the future for, hopefully there won't be a next time.
In their nature, they don't wear out very easily. That's right.
I didn't know if once you bolted them in or something, that was...
No, no. My sense is, Ms. Friedman, they'll be long, here long after I'm gone, and maybe my predecessors, those, in fact...
They won't necessarily be in those streets in front of those homes...
No.
...after Steve's long gone, but the, they'll, we'll still have the K-rails around.
Most of what we purchased was used K-rails, so they've been implemented in many other applications. That is one of the toughest-built, easiest, it looks like one of the, it is, one of the most simple devices to, to protect from these incidents, from traffic control perspective, and, yeah, we will, we have a nice place up at our Brand Park facility that, that, where we store equipment, and we'll be able to store all of that and, and use it whenever we may need it.
You.
Mayor, can I move 8B1?
Okay, any other comments?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
At 8C is Director of Planning regarding implementation of design review changes and recommended adjustments to procedures. 8C1 is a motion providing staff direction initiating amendments to Title 30 regarding design review.
Mr. Starber?
Yes, I'll go to Mr. Hagani, Director of Planning. Hassan?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, members of the council, this report is not proposing to make any fundamental changes to the design review process. However, after more than a year of having implemented the new process, we've had some study sessions, and we've received input from the community members and the two DRBs on how to tweak the process, maybe fine-tune certain aspects of it, so that we can still get even better results from the process that we think is generally working fine. So, Mr. Tim Foy, the Assistant Director of Planning, has prepared a staff report, and he'll go over that. Essentially, there are six recommendations, and any number of these recommendations that you'd like us to start, we will go ahead and take your direction at the end of the presentation, and we will initiate the process. Mr. Foy?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, I regret that I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for you, but I'll try to get through this anyway. As Hassan said, we did, after, a year after council made some significant changes to the design review process, both in regulations and in just the way staff works with applicants and interacts with the board, we wanted to just kind of touch base with the two design review boards and with the council about how things are working, and suggest, as he said, some minor changes. We held study sessions with both of the design review boards, the topics that we went over with them are included on page three of your staff report, and many of those were just discussions back and forth, it did not result in recommendations, so I'll just focus on the ones that did, unless the council would like to discuss any of them, of course. One of the changes that the council made about a year ago was to streamline the design review process and allow only two reviews for final approval at the design review board before the board either had to deny or approve a project. There was, there's no, there's only one time that the board can return a project for redesign. And it was felt by a number, by many board members and members of the public who attended that if the board was faced with a situation wherein there were, in order to approve a project, they wanted to have kind of a long list of conditions, or if they felt that there were issues which they might defer to staff to resolve, but really should be kept in public discussion, that they were kind of between a rock and a hard place, they didn't want to deny someone who had made a lot of changes and come quite a long ways. And yet, they felt that they would like to have a third review, so the recommendation, and staff's recommendation, is that in very limited circumstances, only at the board's discretion could there be, could the board have a third crack at a project. I know when we may, had this discussion about a year ago at council, there was some concern that a recalcitrant applicant might just keep coming back again and again with only minor changes in hopes of wearing the board down, and we would like to avoid this by having this review, as I said, be only at the board's discretion, and applicant could not request continued reviews. So, that's one of the things we would like your input on, there would not be a fee charged for this third, hopefully very minor in scope review. Another problem which we had quite a lot of discussion on a number of facets on, was the implementation of, of the board's approvals and the, and their conditions of approval after a building permit has been, after the board has completed his review, whether before a building permit has been requested or when a project is in construction, especially with remodels of, of older homes, during construction, you just have to expect the unexpected, and there will be a lot of situations which arise in the field which you just can't anticipate, and anyone who has an older home will know that these, staff gets frequent requests for changes from what the board has approved. It's really hard to tell where these come from, sometimes people underestimate the cost of what they propose, sometimes their designers haven't been upfront with them, sometimes a contractor who's not aware of the implications of our processes will suggest changes. And again, sometimes it is just a result of what happens when you start opening up walls. There were a couple of ways in which we thought this could be more easily resolved. I will tell you right now, the process is that these requests are made to staff, and is staff's discretion as to whether these are minor changes or not, or whether it's such a major change that the project has to be returned to the board, which involves a new application, new fees, new noticing, new plans, the whole nine yards. Naturally, someone in the middle of a construction project is reluctant to stop their job for that cost and time delay. So, the two alternatives we were kind of bandied about was to, one, to have input from the board members, either to have kind of a standing committee of the board which could, to which staff could turn for advice on these requested changes, or perhaps just one member appointed by each board to advise staff. If we did have a standing committee, it would probably be subject to the Brown Act, which would involve noticing, minutes, people being allowed to speak, and it would take away a lot of the advantages of a quick turnaround that we were hoping to get. Possibly having just one member from each board advise us might avoid some of the Brown Act problems. An alternative to that, which is also a new staff report, is, is to have staff continue to be, I guess, the arbiter of these requested changes, but to allow staff to schedule a hearing before the design review board when we reach an impasse with a property owner. This gets a little complicated in that this might sometimes happen without the property owner's consent, that we would drag them back before the board. So, noticing might be slightly different, we can't probably force our way onto someone's property to post a sign. But anyway, those two options is either having board members advise staff, or just giving staff the ability to schedule a hearing. They could both happen, or they could be seen as alternatives to each. Those are the major aspects, there are a couple of things in the code that we suggest reviewing, we'd like to clarify in language on the board's actions for preliminary design review. Preliminary design review is something we've encouraged applicants to do before they get too far into a process to get public and board input, but it wasn't really meant to stop a project dead in its tracks, so when the board gives comments during preliminary review, probably because of the language of our... language of our code, it's partly to blame that the public thinks the board is approving a design when they're really not. They're just giving input. The board members had suggested some additional submittal requirements on landscaping plans and sightlines for hillside developments, and then there were just some also, some minor things about the process we wanted to clean up, clarifying how long story poles could stay up and things of that nature. So what we would like the council to do is to initiate these minor code changes on design review, and the last ones I mentioned here, as well as give us input on the, kind of the two major policy pieces of whether a third review by the board on a project is advisable, and also how we might better manage the implementation of the board's conditions. I will say, in that regard, the public, the neighborhood groups often have a great deal of frustration when they see a project going up that's a little bit different than what they thought had been approved. Staff does, planning staff does inspect twice during a process for compliance with design review board conditions. People would like us to catch it earlier. I think there's a great deal of frustration that things don't move quickly enough. What we have done to address this is that we've been working with the building inspectors to see if we can develop kind of a checklist of important things for them to look for when they're out in the field on an everyday basis. These guys are building inspectors, they're not architects, so it's not going to be a perfect system, but hopefully we can catch some of these things earlier. Obviously, with the department realignment that the council approved tonight, there's going to be much greater coordination between Building and Safety and Planning and Neighborhood Services, just by the fact that we're all going to be together and communicating more frequently. A couple of weeks ago, the council approved some money for computer system enhancements that will get us all on the same computer system. I've seen some preliminary views of what that looks like for a single property, and it's going to be much easier to check each division's work for any one person sitting there at their computer. We have clarified the process for how the planning department can request stop work orders with the Building and Safety Division. And we're also creating a database to catch, to make it easier for the planners to catch multiple design review board exemption requests on a single property. With that, I would ask for the council's input.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Hagani, or Mr. Foy. We've been at this now a year since our DRB reform, right? Approximately.
Just a little over, yes.
So it's absolutely fitting that we take a look at it, see how we're doing and what adjustments might need, might need implementation. Couple of questions. It isn't, I assume it's not your opinion that any of the DRB process is meant to be any kind of form of enforcement, because DRB is not an enforcement process, correct?
It's a review and approval process.
So we need to understand that no matter what we do here, and I like some of these, and I'll talk about what my preferences are in a moment, but regardless of what we do here, this isn't going to fix the aspect that deals with code enforcement. It's not going to fix issues of us getting on these things in a slow manner, or not staying on them, or not following through. It's not going to solve the problem of when a developer is intentionally attempting to game the system, as we've seen a number of projects, and drag it out, extend the game, if you will, or just, you know, take a permit to put in those, change out of second-floor windows, and there is no second floor, but then they build one real quick, or, you know, we're going to replace a roof because it's leaking, and then discover, oh, you know what? It's damaged, so they suddenly, this is a second story.
They added a bathroom.
Yeah, or whatever. It's not going to help with those things.
If I may.
Sure.
It is going to address some of those things, and that, very specifically, the recommendation that staff be allowed to schedule an item for a hearing when we are at an impasse with an applicant. And oftentimes, in those situations where, in a situation where we're arguing back and forth, and they refuse to come with an application to go back, if we are authorized to take it back to the DRB without their consent, then that might accelerate their willingness.
That's true, but most of the problems we've seen, at least in the last two and a half years that I've been sitting here, have to do with, haven't had to do with that. They've had to do with people who have gotten approvals over the counter for certain things, or administrative exceptions for a variety of things, and take that as a signal to run the ball. So as a matter of fact, we've even seen situations where an entire structure is basically torn down to the ground, and, you know, we file that under the category of termites. An entirely new and different structure is constructed that didn't resemble the old one, and then we try to sort out for the next number of years, was there a plan submitted and was it approved? Second question. In the last year, how many appeals have actually come to the City Council?
Less than half, about a handful. I would say about five or six at the most, yes.
Do you consider that a large number of appeals?
No, actually, we consider that quite small, given the lengthy review process that we've had and the level of complexity we've had. Actually, that has not been that many.
Okay. My third question is, Mr. Hagani, can you describe a scenario to me where a developer, or an applicant, let's say, would come a long, long way on satisfying conditions that the DRB states is issues, whatever, but then doesn't complete all of them?
A case like that?
Well, a scenario, why would that happen? Why would a compliant applicant come a long, long way, I think was the terminology he used, long, long way, in satisfying conditions that the DRB has set forth, but then, but not satisfy all of them?
And I last...
Coming back.
That's right. I think there have been some cases where the ideas of, the design ideas that have been discussed have been addressed by the DRB extensively, and sometimes the designer and/or the designer's client, the applicant, have had some levels of misunderstanding, or maybe they didn't quite agree with some of the details, and they come very close to meeting some of those requirements, but not exactly as far as the DRB has desired. And I think the DRB sometimes sees that enough of a good faith effort, and a couple of occasions it has happened, enough of a good faith effort to come close, but they still do not want to necessarily give the final approval, and then they would probably benefit from a third review. That's, I think.
Thank you. Fair enough. And one other comment, not a question, has to do with the landscaping aspect. I just want to make sure, well, we're talking about plantings and maturity and sightlines for hillsides. So I just want to make sure that we be very careful, that we don't give the impression with this, that landscaping or planting trees in a design, saying that they're going to do that, somehow becomes a mitigating factor for a bad design. In other words, we've heard that over and over and over again, where, you know, there's a privacy issue, or there's a view issue, or a bad design, or it's too close to a neighbor, or what have you, but we're going to plant trees there. And we have stated over and over and over again that that, that kind of landscaping doesn't mitigate the need for a good design and then complying with an approved design. I want to just make sure that by including language about plantings at maturity, that we don't somehow signal or confuse or encourage us going backward to that kind of discussion again. And then lastly, of the number of items that were presented, one, two, three, four, five, I think six, right? I'm supportive of all of them, with the exception of number two. That is, the allow the design review boards to appoint one or more members to advise staff in reviewing changes to the approved plans before and during construction. You had mentioned you could do that, or number three, or a combination of both. I would prefer to do number three. That's just my personal preference. I would prefer the staff that has the records at hand and the staff at hand to monitor a project and go out and do that. I have a problem with a rotating group of board members and so on taking up that challenge. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Friedman.
First, I want to thank the members of the design review boards who, besides meeting bi-weekly, also met for these study sessions during the day on their own, their own time and on their own dime, to work with the public and work with the staff to make these recommendations. And I also want to thank the members of the public who came to be part of those meetings and who, many of whom are here tonight, because this is an ongoing process, and it's kind of a living, breathing animal, and I think it's, since I've been living in Glendale, been getting better and better. And I wanted to start out by just answering Mr. Drayman's question about giving those an example of a time where one of those third hearings might be necessary. And I can just give you from my experience of being on the design review board before and then after these changes took effect. Sometimes when applications struggle, when projects struggle, it's not because there's not a good faith attempt on behalf of the applicant to do something that is what the board asked them to do and what the staff asked them to do. Sometimes they're just not capable of getting there quickly, not because they're trying to game the system or anything else, but because they may be a homeowner who's trying to do a design themselves, or do a design with a contractor, or with an engineer, maybe a lot of them are not architect design projects. And what I've seen sometimes is they'll come in on the first review, and they have a long way to go. The board's not happy with the massing of the project, maybe they don't like the style at all, or they feel it doesn't have a style. And the people come back, and they've really come a long way. All of a sudden, the house is massed much better, it's, you know, it's all correct, it's going in the right direction, they've now found a style, they've done their homework. We've had applicants come in and say, boy, I drove around the neighborhood, and I've, now I've gotten some books out, and I really love this style, and I want to do this style. And so they've gone in that direction, but because maybe they don't have the background of doing a Spanish colonial revival house or a craftsman house, some of the details are lacking. And so now the board's in this strange situation where there's a lot, it's much better, they don't really want to deny it because it's kind of almost there, and yet, there's a whole lot of details that still have to come back. Maybe the front door's not right, or they haven't picked a front door, they're not sure about the windows, they didn't come in with the window schedule. And so the board feels like, well, we don't want to deny it because everything else is right. The massing is right, it's in the right place, it's the right size, it's gone in the right direction, and if we turn them back, now they have to really start over. They've got to put a whole new application in, pay a whole bunch of money, and really, they're almost there. And then they're in this weird situation where maybe staff can approve all of those, but what if, for some reason, it's the wrong staffer on the wrong day, or we don't like the front door the staff's going to pick? And so they're not comfortable with that, and so I think what they're asking for is that sort of third time to just get those final details and those final tweaks. And that's what I've experienced, and from watching the boards, I've seen times where they've really struggled with this. They don't want to say no because the people really, they really have tried, and they're really wanting to make their project good, and they're almost there, and yet, they don't quite trust staff enough to make all of those decisions. And staff also doesn't really want to maybe have to go through nine or 10 conditions. So they feel like it's something that can come back, maybe even on consent, where they can come back having worked with staff, show it to the board, show it to the public, and everyone just says, okay, we're not even going to open it, we're just going to approve it. And that's what, those are the third times that I see, where really the idea is that when it comes back, it comes back on the consent calendar, just to take a look at it, to be sure that they've followed all the way, and now they've gone that last couple feet. They've gone the mile, and now they're going to get the last three feet, and everything's going to be fine. And that's all the board's asking for. And I think that in certain cases, that's a really good option, rather than letting staff make all those decisions or sending it back. I think it's a really good option, it's a good solution. So I would definitely be supportive of that. In terms of having one or more members advising staff, when I was on the board for the first at least four years, it was typical that in a lot of these cases where it was sort of some of those types of conditions, the board would vote on one member of the board to sort of say, okay, well, we're going to now have Mr. Malecki and going to take a look, or Mr. Insar, whoever it was, they're going to just check the windows, and that person would kind of groan and say, okay, I'll be the one who does that. So I think that what they're asking for now is some version of that, where maybe whoever it is on the board who had the concern, just to sign off at the very end. To me, it was always problematic, sometimes it worked, sometimes, I think that the actual individual board member felt odd about having to do it, so I'm not sure. I'd be interested to maybe hear, I know we have a design review board member here to maybe, you know, speak to that and what the board would think, but I would prefer to allow it to come back on consent than to have one board member kind of off on their own, trying to make that decision, if it's a choice of one or the other. The rest of this, I think, is, are all good changes. I was a little bit curious about some of the additional comments, which is item number seven, on whether that's something that the staff just decided maybe is not the time to bring that up, or something that you did want comment on now, which is in the staff report, particularly on one of them, which I think is interesting, which is the last one, which is to require all affected city departments to review plans prior to DRB meetings. Now, I'm guessing that what that is, is for those times when plans come in, and the board's not sure if it complies with zoning, or will get through Building and Safety. And so they don't want to pass something that then Building and Safety is going to kick back to the board again, or make changes on that might not be in, is that, is that what they were getting at?
Now, that's one of them, and another one that has come back actually by council in the past is sometimes grading, because there is some question as to how the grading will actually take place as opposed to what's being shown on the plans. And we've had several reasons why we don't think it's practical to actually put people through the whole engineering cost of doing some sort of a structural drawing prior, and then running that by Building and Safety or Engineering prior to the DRB actually having their final say on the design. And it's just, it's a cost issue a lot of times.
Well, certainly, anything that you can do to beef up some of the submission requirements to be sure that projects come before the board, especially since we're now trying to get them through with two hearings, when people come in and don't have, for instance, site plans that show surrounding buildings, or on hillside properties that show to scale elevations with, you know, with other projects, I think the staff needs to be really sure that if they're going to come in front of the board, they have all the submission requirements that they need, and if it's questions about grading or Building and Safety, maybe those certain things can be run past the other departments beforehand so that that doesn't become a huge issue. I mean, I've been in those meetings where the architects have spent an hour with their rulers trying to figure out the amount of roof that's being removed, or the amount of dirt that's being moved, to be sure that a project can be built, and it's pretty painful, I think, for everyone concerned. So I think that, you know, these are good recommendations, and I support what the board came back with.
Drayman.
I wanted to respond quickly or briefly. I think the reason you have confusion about my comment is because I didn't address anything about a third and final review. I didn't have a question about that and did not refer to it at all. I happen to agree with it. I said the item that I don't support at this point is item two, not item one. Item one is the third review. I asked Mr. Hagani to give an example, to elaborate on an example where someone would come, two and three or four, would come all that long, long way of satisfying one or two or three or more conditions, but just not quite finish it. You provided yet another example. He provided one, you provided another. It was Mr. Hagani that tied that into the third final review. I didn't ask anything about it, just FYI. So just so the public understands, I am supporting item one on here, pending what I hear from the public anyway, when we hear from the public in a moment, a few moments here. It's item number two that I don't support, and actually, council member, for the very reason you raised. When you were on DRB, part of what, in the beginning, part of what I believe was a problem... When you were on DRB, part of what, in the beginning, part of what I believe was a problem was the ability of one DRB member or another to have, how shall I put it, diplomatically, too much input over a particular condition, or whether or not there is an additional review. And we have great DRBs, I believe. I believe they're doing very good work. And I believe that is a part of why we are seeing only a handful of items coming back to the council. However, I'm not convinced that that is a solution for all time, or that we will always necessarily have DRB members that reflect the community's desires. So I would rather see that particular aspect of it in the hands of a staff member that has consistent access to materials, documents, files, turning immediately to a colleague who has been out to the site to get answers, and so on. That's why I have an issue with part, not part, number two, or item, I'm calling it item two anyway. It's the item that says, "Allow the design review boards to appoint one or more members to advise staff in reviewing changes to approved plans before and during construction." Instead, I would prefer the other option, which is to allow staff to schedule a hearing before the DRB without the property owner's consent when construction differs from approved plans. So I just wanted to clarify that. Other than that, I support all of the items, including the third and final, the third review.
Hassan, just so that I'm clear, are you suggesting that we adopt all of these? Or with some of them, is it sort of one or the other? Do they cover the same ground?
I think the only two that we have, one or the other, are bullet number two and bullet number three, as Councilman Drayman just mentioned, yes. So if you direct us to do bullet number three, we think we will get to the same end result.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to hear from the public.
I'll make some comments and then we'll hear from the public. I'm fine with the different bullet points. I think we're headed, continue to head in the right direction. But for me, bullet point three, I don't like the idea of one DRB member working with the staff, et cetera. And I'm very sensitive to the construction differentials between the approved plans and what finally gets built. I'm just, time after time, that seems to be an issue, whether it was done on purpose or just sometimes in remodeling homes, things happen. I think the DRBs are doing a much better job, staff is doing a much better job, but I continue to be concerned in terms of compatibility with the immediate homes surrounding the project. I think we need to keep working to make sure that they are compatible with the surrounding homes and we don't, I don't think we've quite, we're not quite there in terms of quote mansionization. I still think that some homes are being approved that are just way too big for the surrounding neighborhoods, or neighbors, I should say. Okay, we'll have some more comments later, we'll hear from the public. Larry Barnes, followed by Myrna Stanley.
Thank you for my comments, or your comments. Again, I'm Larry Barnes, president of the Chembie Chase Estates Association. I participated in this process, I attended both study sessions. And as pointed out earlier, with the Crescent Valley, I do appreciate planning, working with the community to try to make these boards more efficient, more effective, and I think that it's a good process. I agree with most of the comments that have been made today by the council. I too would lean towards the third bullet point, where basically the design review board is allowing it to come back for a third effort after certain deficiencies are found out whereby the builder, the developer has not followed the guidelines. It seems to me that, again, the recommendations here that are being made for the design review board are excellent. The problem exists prior to the design review board and after the design review board. Because prior to the design review board, there are certain conditional use permits often done, and I speak primarily from a hillside development standpoint, which is the majority of our homeowners. And that there is this confusion between the effect of the conditional use permit, which often addresses grading issues, amount of earth that has to be moved, construction issues on steep slopes that pop up after the fact that affect construction. So it's much more, I think that there has to be, and I was encouraged by Mr. Foy's comments, that there will be greater coordination between the various departments within the city. Because I think if indeed we have neighborhood services, and we have the zoning administrator who is dealing with CUP issues, and DRB, and building and safety working together on a project, we're going to actually come to build the project that we all anticipate that was going to be built in the first place. I would also agree, however, that, because I was the one homeowners representative that asked staff meet with owners of neighboring properties prior to writing reports. I think it's really important for compatibility. And when you're designing a property that is next door to two other pieces of property, I would think that there was an advantage for staff to physically meet with those neighbors prior to making their recommendations to the DRB, so that they know whether there are design issues from these specific two neighbors on each side of a piece of property. Yes, there's compatibility from an overall standpoint with the neighborhood, but the compatibility issues that really affect the neighborhood are the immediate neighbors. And I think that we can do a better job of getting input from those immediate neighbors prior to going through this process, rather than coming around with an appeal later, because, again, they were not consulted, or that the staff really didn't take their personal issues into consideration. That's not to say that staff should roll over to every neighbor's request, but again, I think it's important feedback that should be implemented into the DRB process. I did not see that actually come forth in some of the recommendations that were made. So again, I would encourage the coordination between departments. I would encourage the design review boards in reflecting upon the compatibility issue even more so than they have in the past, and that they take into consideration the points that the mayor brought up of mansionization and privacy and some of those issues. I think that's being done. I think we're doing a better job of that than we have in the past, but there's still yet to be done. So I would encourage us to put some more teeth into that as well. A lot of the problems have, and I appreciate the fact that indeed additional emphasis is being placed upon when a project is being built that is out of, totally out of sync with what was approved, that indeed we put procedures in place where the city can come back and go to that owner, that developer, and say, "Wait a minute, stop. This is not what we approved." And so the degree to which we can accomplish that, I think we're all going to be happier campers in our respective residents. So I appreciate what's been done by planning departments so far. I think it's a great step forward. I encourage us to continue to revise the process. This is an ongoing process, and maybe a year from now we'll revisit. So thank you.
Myrna Stanley, followed by Peter Futt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Myrna Stanley, president of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association. I left my notes in the car. Don't you know so? I tried to write down my little notes after your comments. Councilman Drayman, you were talking about and asking how it happens that after the DRB process, when X was supposed to happen and the neighbors see Y coming up, and nobody knows why. I think the key is your inspectors. I know they're not designers, I know they're not architects, but when planning starts getting calls from neighbors, that planner needs to go out to the site with the inspector. I think that's your key, to see what the heck the problem is and why things are. Otherwise, it's going to be built and it's going to be too late and you're going to, you're never going to get it fixed. And you know the problems we've had in the Verdugo Woodlands. I think a planner should own his or her file until the certificate of occupancy is issued, and so that when it's supposedly finished and during the process, that planner should go out periodically and look at those projects. Sometimes they have three or four projects, maybe two in one area. Just drive by and take a look and see how things, get out and walk the site and see how things are going. And that way, I think you can stop things before it's too late. I think, I agree with the third DRB meeting, because I too, Councilman Friedman, I've seen the DRB struggle and they start twitching in their chairs when it's almost there, but in order to get there, you have to add, you know, 15 conditions, and then they give it to staff, and then staff starts twitching in their chairs, because they don't want to do that, and some of those conditions can be pretty heavy, and that's not their job. So on a limited basis, I think it's okay to have a third DRB, but after that, then it's got to go, they've got to start all over again. It's, what else? I would suggest that at some point, there'd be a joint meeting between the two design review board. If nothing else, just to meet each other and to throw things around and ask each other what they think about whatever, window replacements, things like that. And I thank you so much for giving staff the direction to get where we're going. I know this process is evolving, but I want to tell the viewing public it's taken a long time to get a council that hears the property owners, the residential owners of the city to get here, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter Futt.
Thank you. I'm Peter Futt, a president of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. I too appreciate staff making these changes, and any process adjustments need to be made. And Mr. Hassan and Mr. Foy have been particularly responsive to our group over concerns of our various projects, and I think our meetings are reflected in these proposals. I too attended a study session. We, as a homeowner association, support the changes, although I think we do think the second bullet item, we also think is problematic, having that single board member advise the applicant. We also support the, definitely support the possibility of a third hearing. I mean, we've been involved in a project in particular where a third hearing would have been very useful. Although, as always, if there's a third hearing, the DRB has to be, at some point, has to be able to be comfortable to say, "No, it's not good enough, you have to start over," or something. I mean, hopefully, it's not kicking the can down the road to have a third, there will be some closure at the third hearing. I am wondering, though, if we do have these interim, if we have these DRB hearings where the applicant is asked to come as part of the staff, or for whatever reason, is that considered, is that a fourth hearing? Is that within the three? Is that sort of an additional? I'm wondering how those, I mean, I think ideally, those should be an additional to the three, because we're talking about pre-construction and then during construction, but maybe that would need to be clarified. Let's see. And I also wanted to say on the most strictly part of this presentation, as Mr. Barnes alluded to enforcement, and I think Mr. Drayman also alluded to enforcement remains the key, and I think hopefully with the consolidation of the planning groups, the computerization, and I hope an enhanced case management system, which Myrna Stanley referred to, where one staffer owns it, where a homeowner group like ourselves can call that one person, they'll know it from beginning to end, and there's no shuffling around. That one person is knowledgeable about the project, and it'll be much harder to game those people. And hopefully, then applicants won't in very early stages get the single permit to put the shingle on, and all of a sudden, you have a second story or a two-story door, or something like that. So I think a case management system and the consolidation of the departments, I think, will go a long way towards helping enforcement. And just finally, one thing, hopefully as part of the consolidation, and maybe the case management is, when we homeowners see a problem developing, we don't have to keep calling building inspectors between seven and eight in the morning, only to get their voicemail. Hopefully, ideally, the case manager perhaps can take those calls, and he or she can work the system and find out what's going on. And just one more thing, I echo the thing, the inspectors have to be some sort of quasi-enforcement, because it's been said more often than we're comfortable with, it's up to the neighbors to complain. I mean, as you know, we feel free to do that, but please, we hope the city also has in process something that can check some of these things, so it doesn't happen, so it isn't built, and it becomes a much bigger deal than to tear it out, tear off the roof, resize the porch, whatever. So thanks, and I appreciate all that's been going on here. Thanks.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Weaver.
Well, I agree with what my colleagues are saying, bullet three. I think that's the best way to go. As far as if design review board members get out of line, we do appoint them now, and we can remove them at will. So, you know, we'll get the feedback if they're not doing the job from you people. You'll be letting us know. Talking to the neighbors, there's pluses and negatives to that. Sometimes your neighbors are not your best friends, and they choose to try to scuttle whatever you want to do. I think it's more pushing the staff, looking at the neighborhood, making that decision. I think the reorganization that we've done in the planning department is going to address a lot of the issues of the post-design review board approvals. I think inspectors and the planners, I don't know how Mr. Higani's going to exactly work it, but that's where the weak link is, unless we have somebody routinely checking it out in addition to the neighbors calling, because even the neighbors might not know if everything is going according to HOIL. So there's some kind of a marriage that's going to go in in that process, because as far as I can tell, that will be the weakest link for now. As we've all said, we've come a long way with this, we're getting closer. Hopefully, it'll get even better yet on it, and I think if we go forward with it, Mr. Higani and his crew are pretty damn good at what they're doing. I want to give them the latitude to do it, and hopefully, when you get out there and you find things during the excavation and structure, and all of a sudden, because I've been through that in my career, the best laid plans that you have, construction drawings, when you get out in the field and actually start doing it, you can find things that, "Uh-oh, we didn't expect that," or this or that. You need to have a process to address those back to the design review board. So I think that makes a lot of sense. So I'm happy with what staff has done, I'll support it, just the way I said.
Mr. Drayman.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have some consensus building here. I just wanted to, you know, I've never had an evening where I've had to clarify so much what I didn't say as tonight. I haven't had to do that in a long time, but let me just do that one more time, so as not to be misquoted. I don't have any question as to how non-code compliant projects get off and running, and I didn't address that either. I simply asked, Mr. Foy in his presentation, mentioned that there are certain cases where people come a long, long way in satisfying conditions laid out by the DRB, but don't quite get there. I simply asked Mr. Higani if he would lay out a scenario in which that kind of thing would happen. He gave an example. Councilmember Friedman gave yet another example, and somehow, we're off and running. But I, believe me, I understand it completely. Stanley, you know that one of my problems is that we don't have coordination amongst some of our staff, and that's why this reorganization is so important. When we have inspectors that go out and say, "Building that see," well, gee, we've had a complaint about a wall behind a house in the Verdugo Woodlands. Yep, that wall is built according to code, the only problem is, it's on the neighbor's property. But he comes back and he says, "You know what? That wall is just great." But if there's no further coordination, we have people building stuff that is just, there's no permit for it, or there was an administrative approval for some aspect of it, or there's an intentional... an intentional intention to game the system. I think that this reorganization will help. But I also wanted to point out that even with that, in this day and age, in the city of Glendale, have any city employees, city staff, that have input that so directly affects our quality of life, our property values, and so on, within our residential neighborhoods that they have the impression that they can or should operate with blinders on, just has to be a thing of the past. We're beyond that at this point, and that just isn't going to fly. And we have taken some steps to begin to change that whole dynamic of, you know, filling out page after page after page of notes about how something is not in compliance, but at no point putting the brakes on at the bottom of the first page and saying, "Why is this still going on?" So I just wanted to point out that with these changes, these adjustments to the DRB process, that isn't enough. That isn't enough to address those issues. It's going to require more than that. It's going to require coordination between some of the pre-existing areas that are now going to be consolidated under planning. So I, again, will support all of these bullet items, except number two. Instead, I would support item number three, bullet point number three.
Friedman.
Well, I'm going to resist the temptation to argue against something that you didn't say, just to—
Thank you.
—just to really get you going. I agree, and I—I'm going to go off of this subject and just go a little bit off script, just to really try to, you know, put a bookmark or put an explanation point after what Mr. Draymond said, because this is still going on now. I mean, just recently, we had a neighbor who did some building, and we found out that they were covering a patio. Well, after they covered the patio, they then put walls around it and windows and turned it into a room. And when we called the inspector, the inspector said, "Well, that's not my scope of what I'm inspecting. They covered the patio, and we don't—I don't care if it has walls and windows." That's what they told us. You know, we—when people complain about things, sometimes it takes a year or more of constant calling to get something enforced. And I know that they have to go through a certain process, and they have to notify the homeowner, and sometimes, a certain amount of time has to go by, and then they have to give it to legal, but I don't know what the solution is of shortening that. But if someone has done something that's clearly outside of the code, or clearly without permit, there's got to be a way to get them to address it, not in a year, not even in six months, but right away. And I don't know what that is, but I need—we need to see that coming back soon. We've got to get the inspectors to look at what's actually been approved, the materials and the plant materials. Never-ending frustration, the person who comes in and says, "Oh, but the neighbors will never see it, because we've got seven oak trees." Well, it's installed, and next thing you know, it's two palm trees, because nobody goes out to check to see what the species were supposed to be and what the landscape architect, who's now on the Design Review Board, approved. One last thing, we need weekend inspectors. I cannot tell you how much building goes on in this city on Saturdays and Sundays. And we've gone past now a house that for the past several months has taken out three or four of those nine-ton dirt movers, dumpsters, huge dumpsters of dirt from under their house. We called the city, there's not one permit pulled for anything. But they can't inspect it, because they knock on the door during the week, there's no signs of construction. Well, every Sunday, there's construction equipment, but there's no one to inspect on a Sunday. So now that I've signaled to everybody in town, if you want to do illegal building, do it on a Sunday, let's spend that money and hire an inspector and get people who are working on the weekends to stop some of this illegal building. Thank you.
Mr. Quintero, is this the point that we give out Tim Foy's home phone number to the public?
Tim Foy can—
After we make him move to Glendale.
Tim Foy can bunk in the suburban with Mr. Zern. Well, I certainly agree with the previous comments, and I talked about reorg in terms of city departments for over eight years. It's finally happened, and one of my main issues was the separation between departments. And sometimes, it's not done intentionally, it's just one person is focused on their job, especially in periods of heavy activities, and they have a lot to do, and someone else has a lot to do in his department or her department. But fortunately, I think now that we're doing these consolidated approaches to development, I think we're going to be able to streamline. It's good for the applicant, and it's absolutely good for the neighbors when they observe things and—for the neighborhoods, when they observe things that are going terribly wrong or just heading in a different direction. So I think with the new—with the new approach, I think we should be able to take some of these issues and deal with them quickly. But more than anything else, it really has to do with the staff and how the staff perceives the city council's perhaps ideas or the city council's efforts. And I just hope the staff understands that it's a different city council now. So what was taking place two years ago, or four years ago, or six years ago, no longer applies. The people have clearly spoken, they're new city council members, and so let's head in the direction that is obvious we want to head. I hope—I know the—the department heads are certainly aware, and I hope that percolates down to staff members that interact with the public, and interact with applicants, and interact with architects and engineers. So I hope these changes will make a difference. I hope there'll be a new effort to renew a sort of different approach to development in Glendale. And look, property owners, like everyone else, when they know that they have to—whether you're a developer on a downtown project, or building on an empty hillside, or adding to your building—or to your home, if you know that you have to go in a different direction, then you're going to do it. You're going to do it, or you're not going to do it. Either you're going to build or not build, but you're going to follow the rules. But if there are gray and murky areas, and possible maybes, and my friend did the following, and maybe I can also do it, then it's never-ending. It's never-ending. So let's follow the guidelines, let's give clear directions, clear enforcements, and I think enforcement—and I think we'll all be in better shape, the property owner and everyone else. To some of the comments from the speakers, I do like the idea that the staff would at the bare minimum meet with the two adjoining property owners to just get a feel from them. That doesn't mean that you're committing to whatever it is that they want done with neighbor's property, but at least listen to the adjoining property owners. There's nothing wrong with that. A letter or some way to communicate. In fact, maybe the neighbor doesn't care, is too busy and isn't interested. That's fine, but let's at least give them some input. And as I mentioned earlier, and one of the speakers mentioned, yeah, planning and inspectors working together, there's just no substitute for that. And I do like the idea, if possible, to have one planner basically stay on the project. I think that's a good—a very good approach. So I want to thank everyone for all their hard work, the DRBs also, I think, as I tune in, I think are doing a much better job than they have in the past. Mr. Draymond.
I have nothing more to add myself, Mr. Mayor, but when you are ready. We're looking for a motion at eight. See?
Mr. Friedman has some.
I'm sorry, one last thing, if you'll just indulge me. One of the speakers had suggested a joint DRB meeting for the two DRBs. One of the most valuable things that I did when I was on DRB was, many years ago, we had a joint—a giant joint meeting to go over different issues, but what we did was, we also looked at plans. We looked at plans that had been approved, the drawings that had been submitted, and then we went, got into vans, and drove around and saw the completed project. And that was a real eye-opener, to see how different sometimes something looks on paper when it's rendered in the meadow with the woods behind it, and then when you go and see it, you know, in the middle of Adams Hill with all the houses around it, and the scale, and how everything changes. And it definitely influenced the way that I looked at plans, looked at elevations, and looked at the sites afterwards. And I think that we should make that something that every couple of years—we do—go back and pull some plans, have everyone look at the plans, and then go around and look at the completed projects.
Yeah, I actually forgot the issue. I think it's a very good idea, in terms of the size of the plannings, that maturity, sidelines for hillside development, et cetera. I think that's—that's very, very important. A landscape architect knows, maybe some of the architects know, but let's get it out, let's make sure everyone understands how tall a tree will be and how long it will take to get to that height and maturity. Okay, do I have—
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on this motion. It says, "Direction." And on the bullets, I think there was concurrence, so—
Yes, I was going to suggest—with that—I was going to suggest with the change that you heard here tonight about bullet point number two, removing that in favor of bullet point number three. I don't know how we incorporate a couple of the—just the comments that were made into this motion, however, but I don't think that—Mr. Weaver, I don't think the councilmember Friedman was suggesting that it be part of this motion that we have to or join meetings.
That was my point.
But I do—I wanted to say, I do support that. I think that's a great idea.
Can those kind of things be left to staff, without putting them into a motion?
I think I understand the additional comments and their directions.
That's always good. Make a motion.
I did just now.
Second.
All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond—
Yes.
Friedman—
Yes.
Najarian—
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Thank you very much for your participation tonight. Next, please.
Nine, we have hearings, and at nine A is the City Attorney Acting Chief of Police, Director of Planning, regarding discussion regarding the extension of a moratorium prohibiting the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries. Nine A one is a motion to issue and accept a report, and nine A two is an urgency ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll go to our acting city attorney, Michael Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you is to extend the moratorium that the council adopted on September 22 relating to medical marijuana dispensaries. That ordinance by law expires on November 5, and as part of that ordinance, the city was required to prepare and issue a report regarding a status of the moratorium, as well as bring back an extension, if it's the council's desire to extend that moratorium. At this time, the staff is recommending an extension of the moratorium for 10 years and—excuse me, 10 months. Excuse me, 10 months and 15 days.
What a surprise.
So that the city can continue to assess proposed regulations, including a potential ban, as well as assess the changing legal landscape in this area. Just to give you an example, since we've adopted the moratorium on the 22nd, a number of items have come about in this area. First, a court of appeal in this district, in a case called Cruz versus City of Claremont, did uphold the enactment of a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries. In addition, you may have read the news last week, that the LA County District Attorney has announced and indicated that he's going to be taking a very aggressive approach with respect to medical marijuana dispensaries that are not complying with state law, stated that his opinion is, and something we probably would agree with, that a number of the dispensaries that are operating in LA County are not operating properly under the state law. In addition, just yesterday, the federal government, the administration, announced that it would be taking a revised enforcement approach with respect to legitimate medical marijuana dispensaries, and when I say legitimate, dispensaries that are operating under all the proposed—all the proposed and actual regulations under the particular state's own regulations. So that landscape continues to evolve. The Court of Appeal in Orange County just recently heard a case on the City of Anaheim's ban, and we're also awaiting word on how the court's going to rule in that particular case as well. Some indication, they may not rule, but may punt it back to the lower court for some additional findings. But in any event, we'd like, obviously, that this moratorium be extended, so that we can continue to watch and see what regulations might be appropriate. At the time, there's a little bit more firmness in this area. In addition, what we're asking for is that the council accept this report formally, so that the city is meeting its obligations under state law to report on the status of the moratorium prior to its expiration. So those are the two items, the report and also introducing the ordinance to extend the moratorium for 10 months and 15 days.
Okay, thank you.
Public hearing, you want to open it?
I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards. I'll close the public hearing.
I'd like to move nine A one.
All right, or introduce the ordinance.
No, nine A one is the motion to accept the report.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond—
Yes.
Friedman—
Yes.
Najarian—
Weaver— Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the urgency ordinance at nine A two.
I think the ordinance has been introduced. Next, please.
Nine B, again, under hearings is Director of Planning regarding proposed ordinance pending tile 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the modifications of approved landscape plans when revisions are consistent with California-friendly planting P Zone 2009-003. Happy one is an ordinance for introduction.
Someone want to—does someone—
Public hearing.
Open the hearing.
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing, no cards.
Go to Mr. Agani for brief staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Basically, this proposed ordinance would allow planning staff to review approved landscape plans that have been approved by the DRB, that may not have California-friendly plans, so staff—at the staff level can make adjustments to the landscape plans and replace non-California-friendly plans with California-friendly plans from a list that's available to us, and that could be done at the staff level. That's all this ordinance would do.
Very good idea.
No cards?
No cards.
The only comment I have is, I just want to be sure that as we're replacing plants, that even if they're drought resistant, that we're careful not to bring invasives into sensitive wildlife interface areas, non-native invasive plants. There's a do-not-plant list that's published by the state.
We will also refer to the do-not-plant list.
Yeah, actually, it's just astounding how far pampas grass has come. Doesn't matter where you go now.
Don't worry, we're taking a lot of it over to Tournament of Roses. It's going on our float, and it'll be going on other floats, too.
Pampas grass. Well, I hitchhiked all over the pampas and never saw any plants faintly resembling that. I mean, I guess it is from the pampas, but I hadn't seen it, but now it's everywhere on all different continents. Okay, thank you, Mr. Agani.
Closing the hearing.
All right, we'll close the hearing. Is this the issue?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a speaker card. Mike MoHill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About plants, just out of curiosity, Mike MoHill, resident Glendale, would, for example, roses no longer be allowed to be planted in Glendale anymore? Roses, to plant roses? I mean, you're talking about certain plants are on the do-not list?
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the rule.
I believe that what they're asking is that if the resident asks for the plans to be changed, the city's not going to be arbitrarily changing people's plans. This is people that already have approved plans, that have gone through the Design Review Board—
Yes.
—who now come back themselves and say, "Hey, we changed our mind about what we want to plant. Do we have to go back in front of the Design Review Board?"
Oh, so this is strictly on design review, not if you're already a resident homeowner and you're already there?
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is just people that have approved plans for new construction. But I'm glad that you asked that question, because if you're wondering, I'm sure someone at home was wondering, too.
Absolutely. I got my azaleas, I got my camellias, I got all those plants. And will we allow those kind of plants, for example, in the future, Mr. Agani? On the do-not—they take too much water? I don't know.
Those are not—in the do-not-plant list is only plants that will invade other people's yards, the hills, spread around, like pampas grass.
Or bamboo?
No, not bamboo, actually, it's not on the list. It's—
It's invasive.
Right, but you have to water it for it to spread.
Yeah, look at—the L.A. River.
Ivy is one.
Is it?
Base of ivy.
Mayor, is the ignorance bush on—
All right, we have our—
He's going to close the hearing now?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the ordinance at nine B one.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Next, please.
Next, we return to oral communications. Discussion is limited, item is not part of this agenda. These speakers allot five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
I have one card. Margaret Hammond. You have a card for communications?
There was none turned in. If Mr. Mohill would like to turn in another one, be able to accommodate.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. On Friday, November 6, the Patrons Club of Glendale Community College will present a fashion show and luncheon at the Castaways at 12 o'clock. For over 60 years, we have raised money, funds for scholarships, and grants to four needy students and deserving students that otherwise would have a hard time purchasing books and supplies and want to proceed with their education. We will have as one of our models Gertrude Ness, who turned 103 in April. So I'm not sure, she may be one of the oldest models on record, but she's right up there and is willing to do it and happy to do it, and we just love her. She's a real, to me, a real model of what we can do in our lives. As I say, we've been raising the funds for over 60 years for students. We're not a large group, we're quite a small group of ladies who do this. It's $45 for the event, and if you call me at 242-7334, I will be happy to get you tickets. Now, one of the other things is about parks. I recently saw the picture of the Cerritos Park in the Parks and Recreation Department and was blown away by it. I mean, I see it when I pass by, but that particular photograph in the Parks Department reminded me of how lucky we are. And apparently, there was an award given for the Cerritos Park. There was one, we received, the city received one for the gas station park, as we call it. And, you know, Palmer Park, when it was renovated, is a really wonderful park. It's really heavily used. It's just masses of people in that area, and which is wonderful, because we have such a high congestion of people living in apartments that otherwise they wouldn't have any green space, really, because mostly apartments that are built, say, in those years that they were jamming them in there, did not allow for green space other than our front lawn, you know? So it's wonderful. And I'm hoping that we, and looking forward to the River Walk, that we will, maybe we'll even get another award, and that when it's finished, we'll be looking forward to seeing it. Now, one thing I'd like to bring up that has happened to me this week, and it's kind of weird, because, you know, seniors are very vulnerable. And I have a friend, and I'm affecting. I went to the bank, I had CDs that were coming up, went in to discuss renewing them. Well, it was very interesting. I got this talk from a young lady and went on about, you know, how to invest this money back in with this particular bank. After much discussion, it turned out it was an annuity at 2.9 or so forth, and the fact, they never said one word, and I'm listening, sitting there listening and thinking, hmm, doesn't sound, something's odd here. And I said to her, "Well, what about the capital? What, oh, well, no, that's not guaranteed, not insured." And I went like, "What, you think I'm dumb? I'm going to give you my money and not have a guarantee that I'm going to get it back, at least that full amount? I mean, forget whether I get the interest on it, right? And I would have had to leave it in for like five years or however." And I thought, at my age, I'm 81, what the heck am I doing? But, you know, a lot of older people get taken in, and this is, I've heard from a couple of other people, and I think that is terrible. Now, the other thing is the credit cards. I don't know how many of you have credit cards. I have a Visa. And all of a sudden, I looked at some paperwork that I got, and as of, I don't know, it's the first of December or the first of January. In other words, if you have points in there that you pay, you know, for your points to be added up over a period of time, they are cutting them from, for 25,000 points, as of the first of the year, you will only get $200, whereas right now, you get $300 if you cash them in. They have to, they'll send you a check. If you wait till the first of the year, they're going to cut it down. The other scary thing, and I know I'm going a minute, but let me tell you. I got a letter from what looked like the assessor's office. It wasn't the assessor's office. It's some outfit that's advertising and that they can get your taxes lowered and that it's $189. Now, again, I have friends that thought that was, hey, this is from the assessor's office, they're going to lower my taxes. They don't realize it's a scam. So I'm just saying that seniors are really vulnerable in some of these things. Thank you.
Ms. Hammond. Mike Mohill.
Not just seniors.
That's true.
Mr. Mayor, Mike Mohill, and council members. Last Tuesday night, at council meeting, by a vote of four to zero, seven consent items totaling over $30 million was approved by council within five minutes of their introduction. Nobody on the dais questioned any of the items being approved included was $28 million for smart meters, $5 million for a utility operations center, and $356,000 for modernization of the Grayson Plant, and a treasurer's request for $100,000 for the Bloomberg Investment Financial Services. I was told after the council meeting by council members and city staff the following. We make our decision based on what the city staff recommends, and that much of the equipment for the GWP was outdated and was in much need of maintenance. Forgotten were the water rate increases throughout the years and transferred to the general fund for city salaries and pension benefits, or the millions of dollars in water bonds that were not used for maintenance or infrastructure, but again, for city salaries and benefits for pet projects, money that could have been set aside for maintenance and new construction. The people have chosen council members without knowledge, a working knowledge of basic accounting, economics, or law. Some council members have to rely on others to prepare their own taxes, and one councilman had to file bankruptcy in the past. Furthermore, do these council members have a working knowledge of the Political Reform Act or the Public Records Act? Without these basic skills, how are these council members going to make sound decisions that affect the public for years? Council members rely too often on the city manager, city attorney, and their senior staff for expertise. Let us not forget the famous line that we need to hire some outside consultants, because staff is either lack the knowledge or just doesn't have sufficient time. Outside consultants are great to have when projects fail and city staff can't accept blame for their failures. What is being said is trust me, city manager or city staff, and just rubber stamp whatever they recommend. We have a city council, and if the city's members do not challenge or question the city staff, should council members just meet and greet the public as the city staff knows all? Let me remind the council members of only a couple of staff errors in recent years. A new police building cost the city millions of dollars of extra because of an inexperienced ex-police officer as the manager of the project. Why was fire equipment leased for millions of dollars later deemed too big to travel on some of our city streets? Adams Square Makeover Park and El Tovar Mansion were all approved by city staff. Our indigenous tree ordinance recommended by staff became fodder for morning talk shows. Council-approved budgets brought before them by staff only to find out months or two later that the budget was not balanced. If the public does not take the time to get involved and question our city council members and staff, then we deserve mediocre performances by both the staff and unfortunately by the council. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, next, please.
That is all, unless there's new business.
We have no new business. Do I have a motion?
We adjourn.
One second.
Marken.
We are adjourned.